All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Lewiston City Council Business Meeting, August 18th, 2020. I just have a couple of housekeeping things to read through. This session will be conducted remotely, and council members will only participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join the meeting using the following website: We will have a public comment period, and any public comment on any item apparent on the agenda could also be sent to publiccomment@lewistonmain.gov prior to or during the meeting. And all comments received would be forwarded to the Lewiston City Council. Members of the public who are logged into the meeting online may make comments when invited to do so by raising your hand button in the lower center of your screen. Once they, once you are acknowledged, your microphones will be unmuted, and you'll be, you'll be invited to make a brief comment. Speakers will also need to be sure to unmute their mics as well. Before making comments, please state your name and the town of your residence. And then also councils are also asked to raise your hands. Madam Clerk, if you could just call the roll for attendance, please.
Sure, absolutely. Counselor from Ward 1?
Present.
Ward 2?
Here.
Ward 3?
Present.
Ward 4?
Present.
Ward 5?
Present.
Ward 6?
Present.
Ward 7?
Present.
Great, thank you. And also present this evening is Mayor Keier and Deputy City Administrator Dale Doughty, City Administrator Dennis Dotte, and Finance Director Heather Hunter, and myself as the City Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. First item is an update on city actions regarding COVID-19. Dale?
Yeah, we currently operate City Hall as we have been with, keep keeping a tag on the number of people that come to each floor, you know, Park Street and then exiting on Pines. That really hasn't changed. I think the, probably the new thing since last meeting is now the schools are kind of settling on how they believe they'll open anywhere between next week and middle of September. We're really trying to assess impacts on staff and operations around those, and that's probably something we'll be doing over the next week. Other than the Deep Main Healthy Grant that Heather will talk about later, I think that's the primary issues we're focusing on at this moment.
All right, thank you. Next item, I want to entertain a motion to accept the minutes of August 4th, 2020.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Petten Gill. Are there any questions or concerns with the minutes? Seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
I have yet to see a copy of the minutes, not included in the packet. Was it online?
Okay, we, we had emailed them, counselor, but I guess some didn't get them, so we re emailed them late this afternoon, so we can list you as abstaining if you'd like.
No, I'll, I'll trust you. I'll vote yes.
Counselor from Ward 7? Thank you. And Ward 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Counselor Clement, it seems like your video is off. It's just a picture of you?
That's correct, sir. I'm having problems with the camera here, apparently.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we're at the public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. And these are for items, for any item that's not on the agenda. There'll be a three-minute maximum per speaker time allotted. So if there's anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment, you just need to raise your hand. Okay, it looks like we have, oh, and he's been brought in. Dr. Warren, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you very much, and you're welcome to go ahead. You have three minutes, sir.
My name is Dr. Wesley Warren. I reside at 110 Ash Street, Lewiston, Maine. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to express some thoughts about the pending expenditure of funds for police body cameras. While I might agree that in some instances, the use of body cameras to protect both the public and the officers might be warranted, I do not believe that such a measure is necessary for our city. It is true, I only lived here but a short time, about a year and a half. During this time, I've had some interactions with the police on a few occasions. During these times, the officers involved held themselves out to a high standard of professionalism. I don't believe that our city has the level of problems with our police officers that some larger cities might have across the country. Are there problems? Maybe, but our officers are people, not machines. I believe that we have far more pressing problems in our city other than how our police officers might conduct themselves. There are at least three other issues that besiege, plague, and scourge our city. One, an ever-growing opioid problem along with other substance abuse issues, a mental health crisis which may be parallel to the opioid problem, and a homeless problem which is evident by the fact that our parking garages have been and are probably still used by homeless people living in their cars. On a final note, and just to be clear, we should be addressing these public health issues with funding rather than backhandedly criminalizing our fine police officers with unnecessary use of body cameras. I believe that our police officers are numbered among the most highly trained in the whole of these United States. Their certifications bear this out. To wit, the Lewiston Police Department is accredited through the Commission on Accreditation for Law agencies. This recognition and recognized professional distinction was initially awarded in 1995. November 2019, the Lewiston Police Department was re-accredited and received recognition as a meritorious agent for being continually accredited for a period of over 20 years, and was given the added distinction of accreditation with excellence. Thank you again for hearing my concerns on these matters, and with that, I yield.
Thank you, sir, and we appreciate those well-thought-out words. And as it stands right now, I'll just share with you, you know, we expect that if this purchase is made, it'll be through the budget process, so public input at that time will also be invited. And that could change by any council action, but at this point, we're anticipating it to go through a budget process. So thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone else from the public that'd like to make your comments? Seeing none? Roll call votes?
All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Counselor of Ward 2.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number one.
Item number one, traffic schedule amendment for parking and street regulation change on Lafayette Circle.
And the requested action is approved?
Sorry about that. Requested action to approve the proposed traffic schedule amendment to prohibit parking around the traffic island on Lafayette Circle.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Back on the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor LeJoy and a second by Counselor Jensen. And I believe the police chief is listed. Chief, how are you, sir?
How are you, Mayor?
Good, thank you. Take it away.
Yeah, we were contacted by the Lewiston Housing Authority. I don't know if you folks know where Lafayette Circle is, but it's off Lafayette Street over by Bates College Track. And they have a turnaround or a cul-de-sac area right in front of the apartments there. The biggest issue is actually during the winter months, when the plowing and the people park in that cul-de-sac, and it makes it very difficult for vehicles to get through there. I drove through there actually this, this morning. There were three cars parked there. There is a large amount of parking for that spot, and Mr. Barabee for the Lewiston Housing was looking to see if we could get that poster for no, no parking in that area. And it, it's in the attachments that were sent to you. There isn't a huge amount of space or work that would need to be done. But it's really basically the folks that live there just out parking in their assigned parking spots is what we're being told by Lewiston Housing.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Jelineus?
Did you say that there was enough parking? You said that you went around this, this morning, and there were three cars there. Were they there because no other place for them to be?
No, there was.
Chose to be there as opposed to the spots?
They chose to be there. I, I looked, there was at least 30 empty spots right next to the apartment building that they were choosing not to park in. So even if there were visitors, there's plenty of places to park. Apparently, this has been an ongoing issue with the tenants and Lewiston Housing.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? To the public? And back to the council? Seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
And Ward 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you. Agenda item number two, please.
Item number two, traffic schedule amendment for parking and street regulation changes for 33 Tampa Street. Requested action to approve the traffic schedule amendment to prohibit on-street parking at 33 Tampa Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Ray. Chief?
Yeah, the issue with Tampa Street, Tampa comes right onto East Avenue, which is a very narrow road. And parking is allowed on both sides of the street, so if you're coming up Tampa, you're going to take a left or a right onto East Avenue. If someone's coming from East Avenue to turn onto Tampa Street, there's no place for them to go. So what I'm looking for is just to eliminate that parking right in front of 33 Tampa Street, which is right, the home right at that intersection. So that would allow if someone on Tampa Street to be on that road, and then someone could actually turn into the road. But right now, you're going to have a head-on collision if somebody tries to turn in as on Tampa if someone's coming off of Tampa.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Questions or comments from the council? To the public? And back to the council? Seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
What?
Ward 7?
Yes.
And Ward 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, please.
Item number three, authorization for the City Clerk to cast the city's ballot for the main municipal association's executive committee and vice president. Requested action to approve the slate of candidates as presented on the main municipal association's ballot and to authorize the City Clerk to cast the city's ballot for the main municipal association's executive committee and vice president.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Khalid, seconded by Counselor Petten Gill. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question probably for the clerk. If approved, this entire slate goes forward. We have no way of separating any of the named candidates in here if we are not in favor of them being elected. Is that correct?
Um, I, I guess you could. The way the ballot is laid out, which is in your packet, Counselor, there are three people running for three seats on the executive committee and one person running for the position of vice president. But I suppose if you wanted to make a motion to specifically not vote for a candidate, that probably would be an order for the council to vote, and we would just fill out the ballot minus that vote if, if that motion was to pass and if that was the wish of the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Clement?
I would move that we split the vote between the executive committee and vice president and vote for each separately.
All right, so we already have a motion on the table. Madam Clerk, we would, would we have to vote on that first and see if it passes, or how do we work that?
Sure, so you, so you could amend the motion on the table. So the motion on the table is what's pre-printed in your book, which is to approve the slate of officers as presented. So Counselor Clement is proposing that basically we divide that into two, so that's fine. So the motion, if his motion receives a second, the motion would then be to basically split the, the races, I guess, on the ballot and vote for them independently. So that motion would be in order if it receives a second and passes.
All right. So is, is, that's not, it's an amendment to the motion, or it's a, I guess I'm a little confused here.
Sure, so basically he's, if, another sort of format would be to, to basically divide the question, and typically that would be used when you have a really long, let's say, resolve or ordinance, and you want to maybe vote on it section by section or paragraph by paragraph. The motion would be to basically divide the question, vote on it in chunks, which kind of sounds like similar to what Counselor Clement is proposing. Counselor Clement, just so I understand correctly, you're proposing that the council vote on the nomination for vice president, which is an officer position separately, and then the positions for executive committees. Is that correct? Is that how you're proposing?
That is correct. Yes, correct, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
So do we deal with this initial motion first, or it would shift to the, to the new motion?
Well, it would shift to the new motion, really, Mr. Mayor, because the original motion is to approve the slate as presented, and it sounds like that's not the intention or desire of Counselor Clement.
Okay.
And in fact, I believe my motion would be to amend the original motion.
All right, so do, do we have a second for that? Okay, I'm not seeing a second. And then we'll return, so then we would just return to our original motion?
Correct, that's what's pending before you. Yes, correct.
Okay. So seeing, seeing no second, we're back at the original motion. Questions or comments by the council? And I see Counselor Ray. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I guess one clarifying question is that when the member of municipality votes on this, it is just the elected representatives who, who do so, Madam Clerk? Or is it, you know, Ed and I were members of the Legislative Policy Committee, and so staff were part of it, and then you were my substitute when I couldn't make it one time. So how, how does the interaction between electeds and staff work here?
Sure, so this is a vote of the main municipal association membership. So Lewiston basically has one vote, which is why we have one ballot to cast. So this is an annual item that the council is asked to review and approve every August, and the main municipal association annual meeting is in October, and that's when all the ballots will be open and counted. It's a membership benefit to be able to have a right to vote for the leadership at MMA. It's not a requirement. We could certainly waive our, our right to vote if we'd like to. But basically, we would have one vote, Counselor Ray, which is the ballot that's in your packet, which is the motion before you for the council to choose to vote on the slate as presented or not.
Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Clement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if this is the appropriate time, I would explain my reasoning behind this. I viewed the slate of officers. There's one person that I could not in good conscience vote for, for this position. And therefore, without the split vote, I would vote no on the entire slate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from the council? To the public? Okay, bring it back to the counselor, counsel, Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One more clarifying question. We are voting on the vice president because it, in the second year or the year after that person becomes the president? Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, we don't normally vote on the presidents. Just an automatic succession as part of the MMA charter or rules of operation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
No.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 6 to 1.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number four, please.
Item number four, public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for spare-time recreation, 24 Molson Way. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to spare-time recreation, 24 Molson Way.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Counselor Jelineus, seconded by Counselor Clement. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public who would like to weigh in on this public hearing, if you could, raise your hand? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number five, please.
Item number five, public hearing on relocation applications for liquor license and a special amusement permit for Midtown Athletic Club to 875 Lisbon Street. Requested action to authorize the City Clerk's office to approve relocation applications for liquor licenses and a special amusement permit for Midtown Athletic Club to 875 Lisbon Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Petten Gill. And with that, I'll open the public hearing. If any member of the public would like to comment on this public hearing, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. I'll bring it back to the council. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none. Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
And Ward 1?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you. Agenda item number six, please.
Item number six, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for a musical concert in Kennedy Park. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application for an outdoor entertainment event in Kennedy Park and to grant a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, for an outdoor music concert to be held at Kennedy Park on Saturday, August 22nd, contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Health Officer, and Land Use Inspector regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
Thank you. I want to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded.
Okay, moved by Counselor Petten Gill, seconded by Counselor LeJoy. And with that, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any comments from the public in reference to this item? Okay, seeing none. We'll bring it back to the council. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to extend my thanks to the staff for conducting additional work on this. Dale, I believe you had sent additional guidance on how these permits were being handled in, during the pandemic. I think I still have concerns, but they were mostly alleviated through that, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ray. Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I still have a lot of the same concerns I have last week, looking at the event. I know city staff's in a tough spot, want to take a stance of neutrality, you know. Not going to break the rule, you know, until they break it, you really can't do, do much. Looking at it, I think it's a risk. Like face painting, that, that kind of stuff going on, just a lot of the activities listed don't seem like it'd be a good thing for a pandemic. And I think that the kids in my ward that play in that park, you know, I'd rather have it open for them, rather the city not use electricity from the bandstand for it. Yeah, I made clear that I, I, you know, don't support the message. That'll probably come out of it. And I have a lot of concerns about this going on during a pandemic when we're in a state of emergency. So I've, I've expressed some concerns about it, the city staff as well, and I appreciate everyone that's listened. So I'm going to be voting against this, and I hope my colleagues agree.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none. Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
No.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
No.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
No.
Motion passed by vote of 4 to 3.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number seven, please.
Item number seven, order authorizing the city administrator to execute a consent of lender associated with Section 811 Project Rental Assistance Use Agreement between Main Housing and the Hartley Block LP. Requested action to adopt the order authorizing the city administrator to execute a consent of lender associated with the Section 811 Project Rental Assistance Use Agreement between Main Housing and the Hartley Block LP.
Thank you. I want to entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded.
Motion by Counselor LeJoy, seconded by Counselor Ray. And Link is presenting. Good evening, Link.
Good evening.
Thank you for attending.
You bet. I was, I was a little nervous. I was in Never Neverland there. It was a long delay on my side coming in.
Yeah, Dale planned on that at the beginning.
They go, please don't make me.
They don't try. They just disappear sometimes. But you came back.
I came back. I'm glad, yeah. Happy to be here. This is really a housekeeping measure. I, I'd heard back in the spring from Main Housing that as they were reviewing a file for the Hartley Block, that part of the financing for that project was a relatively new program in the state of Maine that provides effectively Section 8 certificates for folks with cognitive and physical disabilities. These are people that would like to live away from home or capable of living away from home, but they just don't really have, have the income. It's people who might have Down Syndrome, intellectual disabilities, brain injuries, physical issues that really prevent them from being able to make a, a good living outside, but then nevertheless, they're capable and want to live away from home. So the Hartley Block has five units there. Main Housing is who puts the, the tenants there. I talked to Nathan Zantin, the developer of the project, earlier this week, and he said they were actually the slowest units to fill up, but at this point, the Hartley Block is 100% full. And these tenants have been great tenants, so it's really authorizing the city administrator. We're a lender on the project. We have home and another loan dollars that went into that, deferred long-term loans, and just looking to get approvals so Main Housing can have a complete file.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for anybody, I guess, Link or anybody. The net effect of us not approving this would be what? It's a good question, and I do not sure I know the answer. I know Main Housing would like to have consent of lenders. They've got them from banks and other entities. And this is really, it's been in place since before it was done. It was simply a misstep on their part that they had not requested it at the time of all the other approvals for the project. Okay, so we don't know what the net effect would be, in other words? I do not, no. All right, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Counselor Petten Gill?
I just wanted to say that as, as somebody who saw this come through at the very beginning stages on the planning board.
at the very beginning stages on the planning board, I'm very excited and glad to hear that the Hartley Block is now at capacity and full. So it's great news.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Link, could you just clarify again? So it was Main Housing that did not request this documentation from us? We didn't miss the step?
That is correct. It was literally they were reviewing their files about a year after the project was complete. They went, oh, my gosh, we don't have a consent from the lender, at least this lender. And they reached out and asked us to remedy that for them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none to the public? And back to the council? Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number eight, please.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item number eight, Resolve Authorizing Public Works to Apply for the 2020 Recreational Trail Program. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing public works to apply for the 2020 recreational trail program with a proposal to utilize public works and volunteer in-kind services as the required local share.
Don't move. Second.
Okay, so moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Pettingill. And... Dale's presenting on this.
Yes, and just a moment, I got to bring back, my screen blipped and I sent Counselor Jelineus into the other room. Be back in one second. Sorry about that, Counselor. My screen blipped just as I swung it, blinked and missed, so.
Yeah, so thank you, Dale.
Yeah, sorry about that. I got to work that out here. The Department of Agriculture, Recreation and Forestry periodically puts out their pass-through for recreational trails program under the Department of Transportation. They put out a solicitation periodically. That solicitation is on the street now and is due on September 25. In this case, those applications require a resolution from the governing body of the municipality. I think it's just to make sure that the municipality will support it when it's complete. Those grants are up to $50,000, 80% is federal funds, 20% is local funds or local acts. Our proposal is to meet our 20% match in in-kind services, both through us and through some volunteers. If you look at the last page of that item, there should be a color map in there. And you can see in the reserve, there are two trails currently existing. This will connect those two trails, linking up the four or five neighborhoods, really providing some additional recreational activities for snowshoeing, jogging, hiking, walking, bird watching. So you should be able to see that on the last map. And again, this is just a commitment to apply for the grant.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if any councilors have never been out to this area to do, to walk the trail that's there now, but it's a beautiful spot. And the walkway is incredible through the swamp area or the bog area. Yeah, I would encourage councilors to see that if they haven't. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none to the public? Okay, back to the council? Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number nine, please.
Item number nine, Resolve Accepting and Appropriating a $212,160 Grant from Keep Main Healthy 2020 Municipal COVID-19 Awareness Campaign Round Two. Requested action to approve the resolve accepting and appropriating a $212,160 grant from Keep Main Healthy 2020 Municipal COVID-19 Awareness Campaign Round Two.
Thank you. I want to entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor LaJoy. And Heather will be presenting.
Yes, this is part of the CARES money that the government first went through. We had the first round that the city was awarded over $400,000. The second round, we applied for an additional $400,000 and we received $212,000. It provides additional mass PPE equipment outreach for the community as well as bathroom fixtures for the airport, touchless bathroom fixtures for the airport, and some work for the Economic Development Department and liaison to go out to area businesses and kind of take polls on how they're doing, what they need, and those types of data elements.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for your work on this. I know it's been challenging and it's much appreciated. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heather, can I just ask? So a conversation that's been happening at the school committee and department level has been that as schools are reopening and, you know, we have employees who might work in, but live, work in Lewiston but live in different municipalities and have different sending schools, is there a possibility that folks will need to change their work conditions in order to accommodate childcare with that happening? And is there an opportunity to use CARES funding to adjust hours, pay overtime, or help with temps?
This particular money is not designed for do that. It is strictly for public education and outreach on, you know, how to protect yourselves, wearing masks, getting that word out, and social distancing and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council? Dennis?
Just wanted to make a comment. I think you, I certainly addressed Heather Hunter's work on this, but she's not going to pat herself on the back, so I need to make sure we really drive home. This is over $600,000 that have come into our community because of Heather's work. The moving parts on this, I'm not even going to try to really express just how much she had to go through to work with. I mean, this isn't just throwing a budget together and submitting a grant. She's worked with community organizations, staff, all these moving parts. And really just, I cannot compliment it enough, and I want to make sure that that's not missed in this because there was a significant amount of work and just outstanding work by Heather. So I just thank her for that, and absolutely, round of applause for sure. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So not seeing anything further from the council, I'm going to turn it over to the public. Any questions or comments from the public? And back to the council? Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Wow, this has been a really efficient meeting, councilors. Thank you. Agenda item number 10.
Item number 10, Reports and Updates.
Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two separate committees to report out on. For our school committee, I'll start there, and also Kathy, I'll send you notes for this so you don't have to scramble to write it down. So we met on August 10. The interim superintendent's contract was approved. We also pushed the start date of school back to September 14, and we will be using a hybrid model. Additional details are being worked out on that. I anticipate we'll hear more about that soon. The school committee also met last night on a personnel matter and will be meeting on August 24. That agenda will be available on Thursday, but I believe we'll be talking more about how we're returning to school. Another committee, the County Budget Committee. So I attended the county commissioners' meeting where the budget was presented overall, and they started working on the different schedules. They are proposing a 3.6% tax increase with a third of that being contractual obligations. I know we spoke both about the city councils' tax levy as well as the school committee's levy and keeping those at zero for this upcoming year. The county is on a slightly different fiscal year schedule, but I wanted folks to just start thinking about, there's an ideal number to get to. Lewiston holds four of the 14 seats between myself, Counselor Pettingill, and two citizen members. And so if there's a direction that folks want to give, we don't actually start meeting as the County Budget Committee until September 9, I think it is. But I just wanted to give folks a heads up. I'll be attending again tomorrow for the county commission meeting and the following week as well. So if folks have a direction or if we want to have a more full discussion about that, let me know.
Okay. Counselor LaJoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it belongs in this section. As a member of the substation, the fire substation committee, I just wanted to let everyone know that the process is going well on that temple. And if councilors have an opportunity, probably take a drive by and take a look at the process that is happening there. Very good. Thank you.
Are they clearing the land there or they actually started to do more work?
They've cleared all the land and they prepared the surface with the interior of the building with all plumbing and so forth. The foundation has been poured. They have concrete walls in a certain section. And they're starting to put up wooden walls now as partitions and stuff like that. So it does look promising. It looks like it's going along well.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for Counselor Ray. The County Budget Committee is advisory to the commissioners, is that correct, Counselor?
Correct.
So the budget committee has no final say at all in the budget, just a recommendation?
I think we have a say sending recommendations. I think that is valued by the county commission, but it is non-binding.
What I would suggest if mayors, if members of the council would agree to this is that we send a message to the county commission. I believe the city of Auburn followed our lead and came in with a very slim budget this year. We came in with a negative budget. I would suggest to the county commissioners, in view of everything that's going on, that they take a long, hard look at things before they agree to a 3.6% increase. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I just respond to that briefly? So I would definitely, I appreciate that sentiment. And I don't know if now's the time to have this discussion. And I don't have all of the information yet either of where those increases are coming in. A portion of it's from the DAs because we already heard from the district attorney. A portion is in the sheriff's budget that haven't heard at all yet. I think that direction is helpful, but more specifics might be better in two weeks from now, just if that's helpful for anyone.
Very good. I would hope that we would hear something in two weeks that would cause us to want to do something one way or the other then.
And I'm sure we'll get good updates from Counselor Ray.
No complaints thus far, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Any other reports or updates? Seeing none, agenda item number 11, please.
Item number 11, Any Other City Business Counselors or Others May Have Relating to Lewiston City Government.
Counselor Ray?
So I feel like I previewed this in my question to Heather just a few items ago, but I am very curious about how staffing at the level of city government is going and if folks have any indication if people will be needing different accommodations as we head back into the back-to-school period. I'm not sure if that's something staff could answer now, but just curious as to an assessment.
So I'll certainly jump in and allow Deputy City Administrator may add to it. But what we are assessing that, actually, we've had some conversations at our management team level, actually, as recently as this past Wednesday again. And what we are doing is doing that assessment of our staff, having those conversations and really understanding what their plans are. As now schools are announcing what the school schedules are, and I think that folks, you know, certainly we're thinking of that. That's certainly the report we're getting. We're certainly seeing some themes. I know tomorrow, there's an anticipated further discussion on that to really understand that. So unfortunately, we don't have a reaction or a plan, so to speak, of how to respond. I think our first was more or less taking an inventory of what are the concerns? What are folks actually faced with? And then we're working on an appropriate response from the management, you know, level of just, you know, how we'll handle those situations. So it's absolutely an active conversation, and I think we are being proactive of trying to get ahead of this as best we can. Obviously, everyone has unique, may have some unique situations, but we are seeing some general themes there of what folks are, you know, facing. And hopefully, we can work within the, you know, to accommodate as best we can as we work through it.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Good, thank you. Anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Sure. Counselor from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passes by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you all, Baron.